We will go ahead and get started, Board. Thank you for being here. We're applying to this. Several things to share with you, and I think Mary Ann Gata has an agenda in front of you. So, a quick word of thanks. Oh, Father God, thank you for being with us. Thanks for the beautiful day. Thanks for this fall weather. Thank you for getting us through a weekend with three large events here in Brandon. Had another one today here at City Hall, and very thankful for everything you give us. Lead us and guide us, be with us, protect everyone, and we ask these things, God, in the holy name of Jesus. Amen. All right, Board, here we go. And I'll try to do this as quickly as we can. Anyway, that's somewhat of an agenda to work through there. I want to start off again with a good time of Hayden and Ryan over here. So, really just want to start off with that, and if we need to continue this discussion, then I'm going to add a couple of things, and I'm going to ask them to add anything, and give you opportunity to ask anything you might have thought about. East Mart Drive Legislative Session coming up, and we'll discuss that with you. MPO stuff, Municipal League, National Guard, ribbon cutting, that is Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m. Salish Drive is something we started working on, gosh, 11 years ago. It might come to fruition here shortly. Parking lot gates at Shiloh Park, and the budget adoption. So, just very quickly, Tim Martin has done an excellent job for it. I'll be glad to get you a hard copy of that thing if you'd want to see it. That is every stormwater detention, retention, detention, some of both, that we know of in the city right now. And, huh? Yeah, it's a little confusing. It's just so much data. And the other side of that is, he's got it in a spreadsheet with the quantity of them, shape, what street it's on, who the owner might be, commercial, residential, and latitude and longitude. We've got it all marked out pretty good, and we'll be able to give that to you lat lines. I know you want all that as well. Just a couple of simple observations. The ASBILs, as we have them, we have a roomful of them. A lot of them have been digitized, but one of the things that would be helpful to an overall look of the whole city is to get that seamless, to where it's all connected into one file, it can be evaluated in one way. In other words, one engineer might do a parcel in one way, another one might do it another way, using different criteria, but it would be helpful to the city long term to have something that's all sewn together in one document. And Hayden says he can do that in six months or less. I'll give you the floor in just a minute. So, I just wanted to set up a little bit of time, and that's what this is. If you thought about it, and that's part of the cost of that, is me pushing. I've got a, that's up to that, $600,000, is us pushing to get something as quickly as we can. And Board, and Hayden, and Ryan, I got to tell you, for me, that's important because I really believe we're on the cusp of another explosion in Brandon of residential properties and commercial properties. And I think the sooner we have a grasp on this perspective of stormwater control and management, the better off we're going to be. So, I want him to talk about timelines, what the deliverables are. We want to target particular zones, rather than doing a holistic and kind of work our way around if we need to break up what our deliverable date and what we're going to be paying you is, and then those targeted recommendations. So, Ryan or Hayden, come on. Now, Board, I know some of you had a few questions, some of you wanted to look at other things that someone, another city or another jurisdiction might have done somewhere else, and I think Mr. Overby here has done quite a bit of work on that. So, do y'all have any questions about where we are going forward, or what you're going to receive? There it is. Okay, go ahead.
So, it's my understanding that Wagner did a same, basically the same thing for the Rankin County. Is that correct?
Sorry about that. It was a similar situation. That was a watershed, stormwater base plan. So, it was really more going out and identifying the sites. There were recommendations in that plan. The big differentiator between the two is this one has a lot more GIS focus, so we're capturing your assets. That plan also did not include any modeling. So, part of the recommendations of that plan was to do some modeling in their critical watersheds.
So, is the city of Brandon, I'm assuming, was included within Rankin County, right?
That's correct.
So, but what's your proposal now? It's not an overlap of any of that?
No.
Totally different?
Sorry.
Totally different, right?
That's right.
Okay.
So, the modeling that's ongoing with the county's watershed plan is in Heckgrass, which is a little more high level. We do reference Heckgrass in this to delineate the sub-basins, but this is going to be more microscopic, looking at, you know, the pipes and the systems. So, it's more detailed modeling.
So, when you use the word assets, define assets for us.
So, yeah, your assets are what you have in the ground. You know, your pipes, you know, the detention ponds in the systems. I mean, you do have some open channels, your inlets, you know, just, you know, we kind of correlated it with your sewer system. You know, there you have assets, pipe, manholes, lift stations, same on stormwater. So, this is, you know, we're kind of start from square one with a utility and then building out that, your assets. So, and we would have, we're going to have to develop, you know, a format to keep up with all that, and that's one reason delineating those sub-basins will give you a methodology to track all of that.
So, I'll parallel that with something else I've asked to include in the budget, and we'll get to that when we get ready to do it. You'll vote on that. Even though it's included in the budget, doesn't mean we're spending it, just goes in the budget. Right? But, we created a master water system study and a wastewater system study. Pickering did that for us. That was in 2016. Want to do those again and update that. So, Hayden, I see this is kind of a living document that you're going to have to update over time. You know, do you have any recommendation off the top of your head how frequently you need to go to this thing to update it?
Well, you know, it's hard to say at time. You know, we don't know what Brandon's, like in 10 years, you know?
Well, five years.
Right.
So, would you see a sequence of every five years, every four years, every three years of revisiting this and...
Right. The more times you dust it off, you know, the frequency...
Okay.
The better.
All right. Any other questions, Board? There we go.
.......................................
Thank you. Great question.
Yes, there will be a prioritization section, and we'll work with all the stakeholders involved for different inputs. You know, if we want to weigh cost, the ease of land acquisition, schedule, you know, we can put all those factors in there, and prioritize those projects.
......................................................................................................................................................
Yeah, is that, this would arm you with those costs to allow you to plan financially how you needed to do that. You know, there's a, there's a couple of different routes on how you could generate that.
To add to that, we, we're engaged in the comp plan right now, updating the comp plan and making application for grants as we have them. And to have a water distribution plan that we already have, even though we're going to update it, and a wastewater plan, having those in place is something many do not have, and it gives you a leg up in grant application. So, I would assume that this does the same thing. So, there probably are some federal dollars out there, and having this in place would say you've taken some local action to achieve some funding from outside sources. You want to add to that or take away?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you're exactly right. I think I made reference at last time's meeting about the FEMA program, FEMA pre-disaster mitigation. They all want to see the planning work on the front end and some type of hydrologic model to back up your proposed solution, so going into it, even, even on your planning side grants.
That makes sense. And I'm going to go through some MPO things on transportation and kind of back that up the same way. A lot of times the feds like to see the locals that you're taking some kind of action toward what really needs to be done, rather than just going out there with an open hand asking for all the time. So, you know, having definitive things of where that money's going to go is a plus.
.........................................................
That's, that's correct. That's included in here to kind of take a deep dive in the ordinances, you know, look at, look at your problem areas. If it's isolated to a sub-basin, if it looks like you're having kind of chronic issues in this one area, maybe you didn't implement something here. You know, same with the model, you know, if you want to implement that into your development ordinance to where that can be utilized for, as a development tool going forward, that's a part of this, is looking into those ordinances and making proposed suggestions.
Any other questions, Board? Any other thoughts? They're available anytime. You can hit them during the week, email them, call them. But, I guess at this point in time, my dust has settled a little bit, and if you're comfortable with everything you've heard from Wagner, I think we'll go forward with this and begin that process, and hopefully have a deliverable at some point in time, less than six months from now, and begin to piece it together. Okay? All right?
One thing, will this include problem areas, let's say? We talked about this last time. Maybe it's our fault. Maybe we got too small of a pipe. Maybe we need to upgrade. Is it going to evaluate all of that too, like saying, hey, here's your problem, and to improve the problem, this may be something the city needs to do?
Right. I mean, it will, I guess it'll tell you two things on that. It'll tell you what you have, you know, and it'll tell you kind of what the problems are and what the solutions are. So, there will be, you know, some of that, you know? So, there, I mean, we will look at the issues that you have, and then there will be solutions developed out of that. If it is a small pipe, the solution might be coming in and replacing that pipe. If it includes adding some detention retention upstream, you know, we just, there will be some solutions there, some actionable items, but...
I think you're spot on, Harry. You know, a lot of these ASBILs we have are 20, 25 years old, a lot of the older neighborhoods. That technology, that science itself has changed so much in modeling, you know, really a study unto itself. So, looking at it holistically at a little place and not looking at a big place, you know, in today's perspective and science is absolutely different. All right? Sure.
........................................................................
Yeah, you're going to run from it. We've been running from it. We want to stop running from it, and that's kind of what this whole conversation's about. But, there is an element in community development where you, I could argue with you that we should be, should have been, the city should have been inspecting these things as structures from day one, just, but to parallel that, it's like a grease trap. We should be inspecting grease traps. I remember when the Pizza Hut was down here by, at Trust Care now, which is Trust Care for Kids. Truck pulled in there one day, and the axle went to the ground because the grease trap collapsed. It was in the parking lot. Nobody had been inspecting grease traps. You know, you build a $100 million wastewater treatment plant, you better start looking at grease traps and what's getting into the system. So, it's not bad government. Nobody else is doing it, but we should be doing it. We should think in those terms of an annual or biannual inspection of those are structures that handle our stormwater. So, we do have some buy-in to protect those downstream, and ordinance is the only way to do it. Okay? Good? Thank you, Hayden. I appreciate you coming. All right. While I'm through these things, Rankin County, East Mart Drive, there's been an update. They did meet last week, the Planning Commission. I believe they approved with some other caveats. I just want to make a couple of observations to you, and you will, you will vote on this September 3. Is that correct? Yeah. You'll vote on this September 3, and you'll formulate your own opinions about any loss that... There we, uh-oh. All right, Caleb. Lost me here. I guess this screen here got lost somewhere. All right, got it back. What that was? All right, Board, so there you are. So, I'm going to give you a couple of my observations and thoughts. So, this is the property in question, what's in red, Rankin County owns, and they have the long red thing you see that comes out to East Mart Drive. We've got sewer lines under that, one sewer line that parallels it, the, and that's East Mart Drive. By the way, historical perspective, East Mart Drive is the original Highway 80. So, it came down and had an at-grade crossing before the bridges were built in 1936, interstate was built, so that is Highway 80. And that little road, that little finger sticking out there, didn't exist until Brandon built that for, when MSI, we came over here to get to that metering station behind Marquette Cement Plant, they had to come all the way off of Sunset Drive to get there. And I've had a conversation with a guy that used to get there and work on that. So, this is the sewer lines. I modified this just a little bit. I guess I'm going to look at you and go, I guess, yes, we need to be assigning. If I need to make it an agenda item, I will going forward. Need to turn benchmark loose on preparing plans to take care of these sewer lines. I would propose that we need to do the red and the blue. I added the yellow just to give you some flavor of, we're not talking about every sewer line in that basin, but at least all of the red and blue to get the road done, what's going to be traveled over, because there's going to be heavy trucks running on it. There are heavy trucks running on it right now, which I can't, I'm not going to say we need to stop that, but you've got loaded trucks with rip raft rock on it, running on sewer lines that were put in the ground in the late 40s and 50s. So, we just need to go ahead and take care of it. But, it's everything from Community Bank all the way up to the alternative school that come through these lines, everything down Marquette Road to Mandys, Pavilion, and all that kind of stuff comes through here, E911 Building. And I, looking at that, I think there are 160 homes in there in Lake Forest Apartments. Anyway, the big problem for me is not only sewer line, and I told them that on the front end, but it's also the traffic at that intersection now. I travel these roads all the time, many other people do, certainly all emergency response people do. You don't. Right? I don't know how many times you go through that intersection, Value Roads, Marquette Road, and Highway 80. David, I don't know how fast, how many times y'all travel that. I can tell you it's many times a day for me, usually. I can tell you it's a very high-traffic intersection. I'll be glad to run the numbers and pay Planning and Development District to put counters down if you want to see those. That is the pinch point. It's going to continue to be a pinch point. You can't change that. You know, I showed you some, I sent you some video stuff of the schools, you know, Rouse Elementary, you've got 125 to 135 cars lining up daily. They're dropping off children in the morning. We've had two or three instances where they already back up on the Marquette Road, off, just the line is full getting in the Rouse. So, we've got school problems. And if you look at traffic here, I made that earlier this afternoon, Delta Industries, I mean, I've asked them, they're running 65 to 67 loads out of there daily. Outward Bound Ministries, they've got 12 to 15 vans they run, that's the old Kennedy Farm Supply. And, you know, these, when I say twice a day, they're going out and picking up people, bringing them back in, and taking them out at the end of the day, and coming back in with the vans in the evening. Region 8, Boozy Chemical, if you've been out that way, you see they're digging a new railroad, and they're replacing the tracks off the main line into that cement plant, which tells me they're going to be pushing more and more cement out of there, more 18-wheelers. SO Maintenance Barn, E911, Mandys Daycare, Rankin County Pavilion, Brown Vending, and Lake Forest Department. It's just a busy road. So, in thinking of that, when you allow all of the county traffic to hit that point, if they could help us out, it would be very helpful. And I would make these basic recommendations to you, because I know we're going to approve that. And you, I would ask that you think about the things you're going to approve or ask of them to meet them halfway. Not to apply any foul wear surface on the road until we fix those sewer lines as fast as we can. We'll get that to you, get it bid out. We've got to get to the state revolving loan program, DEQ, and borrow the money, whatever that's going to turn out to be. Now, we just don't need a fixed road if we've got to dig a road up to fix what's going on to the road. Don't need to get into that. Agree that all exiting traffic that comes out of there should turn right. If they're going north or they're going east, there's no reason for them to cross the railroad tracks and come up to that Marquette Plant just to go down Value Road. You're just making that intersection even worse than it is. And then, delivery of bulk items. Be curious to know how many tons of stuff they've brought in, rock and gravel over the years, and it would be helpful if they don't peel off the interstate and just congest that. We already have problems with rocks. I don't know if y'all see it. Probably once every, twice, three times a week, I'm asking public workers to go out there with shovels and get the concrete out of the highway while it's still wet when it comes out of there. So, anyway, it's just, if we can get help on those kind of considerations and anything else you might think of when we have that public hearing, I would appreciate it. I think you need to be thinking in those terms. Legislative Session coming up. Representative Trey Lamar is Chairman of Ways and Means. He proposed something last year. They kind of tabled it. These, these type of things are just like the Modernization Act. They are extremely technical and far-reaching. So, the purpose, need, and desire of our Mississippi Legislature is to make global changes in our life. I've got a copy of this, and I'm going to give it to you. It's last year's version, but this is going to be a hot topic for our legislature, our county governments, and city governments. And the reason why is because they want to do away with the income tax, and they want to reduce the grocery sales tax. I guess it'd be great if they eliminated the grocery sales tax. I'll look at you and say, that would have a detrimental effect on three, four, so the municipalities and the state of Mississippi to do that. You've got, Pele Hachi, great example. They got one grocery store. You can imagine what that would do to the operating capital that that city would have, bucket or anywhere else, you know? So, it just matters, and it's very complex, and it's not a simplistic thing. So, I'm going to go through my time with folks saying, just whatever you do, don't touch the Modernization Act. Get things working like it's supposed to. Mark did a great job with that in the legislature, just leave it alone. But, there are going to be global changes for us. So, imagine if you do away with income tax and you reduce grocery tax to where we've got less sales tax coming in. The whole idea is you push taxation from the state down to the local level. You might want it to be, you might want that. You might not want that. You know, in a sense, it's kind of making you be the bad guy. I can tell you many other states, local taxation, sales taxes is decided at this level. It's not decided at the state level. So, you know, you get, just a big kettle of fish is the way I would say that. And I've got that hard copy for you. I would ask that you start reading it and start thinking about it. And we've got a legislative meeting coming up over at Central Mississippi Planning and Development District Monday, August the 26th, and like to invite you to go. I'm going to be there. If you want to come, I think they're having fried catfish or something like that for a lunch meal, but these is where these discussions will begin, and they will go through the fall, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, to hopefully arrive at some point to create a document that the House and the Senate would come into agreement on, and then, you know, it's going to be up to municipalities and counties to decide if they are in love with it or not, or if you're going to fight it to the, to the end. So, it's a global change statewide to even be thinking about these kind of things. So, this tells you that the state can't automatically on their own eliminate the income tax or change the sales tax because of the far-reaching impact it's going to have on you, on us and our citizens. Shift over to MPO information. I've said this, and I tried to create a few slides here to better define what I'm saying. So, this is just like David, the conversation we just had concerning stormwater, that if you've got a plan in place that allows you to go look for federal dollars that you might be able to apply to that. And the comp plan that we're working on, or water plan that we have that we're working on, the wastewater plan we have on, wastewater helps us at DEQ, make, go make applications for grants. We may, we're making application to Delta Regional Authority for some water wells. We're making application to economic development for water wells and all these kind of things. Having these plans in place tell those on the other end that are taking that stack of applications and working through it, that you've got adequate information and good decisions that you're making these requests from. So, that is the MPO area. It is really the red boundary. It is comprised of the bigger part of three counties, Madison, Hines, and Rankin, and those things that the bottom, you see, it was created in 1975. It's not a new critter. There's one on the coast, and there's one up, actually, the north part of the state is included in the Memphis MPO. But, these are federal dollars that come down, and they handle a variety of things. So, this is generally what the money goes to that we can make application for. Congestion mitigation, interstates and state highways, earmark and discretionary grants, group resurfacing, group bridge repair, group safety. Well, obviously, we don't have that many bridges in Brandon. We don't have that many bridges in Rankin County. I will give our past supervisors their accolades, because I've traveled quite a bit, and you go up into other counties, especially up in the Delta, they haven't had the dollars to put in the bridges. So, our bridges in Rankin County are really in pretty good shape. But, these are mechanisms and veins that you can get in to do what I call abbreviated MPO projects that are generally 25% local, 75% federal dollars, no state dollars, no county dollars. So, you get into these things, and we look at these all the time. These are daily, you can get online and look at MPO. I'd encourage you to do that. You can read it a lot, and read more than you ever want to read. Pavement Management, these maps are there, identifying what needs work right now, what's falling apart, and what's in good shape. So, these things exist in many other disciplines in there. So, I want to go through and impress upon us back to stormwater, back to DEQ, back to Department of Health and Water, and now Transportation. On behalf of the MPO, we just completed the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan. It is part of an overall state plan of the State Transportation Improvement Plan. So, it's embedded within it, and it allows the state and it allows us as the MPO here in this area to reach out to get federal dollars. And it's critical, but it's very time-consuming and expensive to do that. So, I've got these pages. We just had an MPO meeting last Wednesday, and I brought these pages back to you. pages back to you, I have them, I'm having them printed for you on all of the disciplines I'm gonna show you going across here. But if you're interested in pavement management, and why we didn't get something that we asked for, or why we didn't get a signal, or why we didn't get this, or we didn't get that, please understand, just because you want it doesn't mean it fits into one of the criterias that those federal dollars are allowed to go to. And also remember that you're in competition with everybody else. So, Rankin County's in competition with Madison County, Madison County's in competition with Hines County, Hines County with Rankin County, Brandon's in competition with the City of Jacksonism municipality, Madison, Flora, Ridgeland, Pearl, Flowood, Richland, you know? So, it's a competitive environment that you're in, and you're meeting several criteria that are very exact. They're not open-ended, no decisions are made because I like you, it has to be a real need and a real justification in order to get those dollars. And it sounds crazy when I show you this blue, green, red, orange, yellow, green, blue again up at the top. You have to achieve all of those before you can begin construction, get a notice to proceed. I'm gonna go through those real quick, but it's eighteen steps, nineteen if Matthew Miller was in the room, because I found nineteen recently with him, and I'm gonna turn around and grin at him when I get to number nineteen. So, number one, you've gotta have a responsible public agency, LPA, and there's an LPA division in Mississippi Department of Corrections, and if you don't have that, so, just anybody, this is not for the world to make application for these federal dollars. Number two, you've gotta have a project that qualifies for one of these disciplines, a bridge project, a pavement management, a safety project, interstate exchange, those kind of things, and you've got to begin over time, planning for those, and creating your justification of turning it into a reality. You've gotta have federal dollars that are committed. Now, we do that by a call for projects on any of those disciplines I gave you. So, these disciplines that I put up here just a second ago, there'll be a call for projects for number four, which is abbreviated TA, that's multi-use paths and things like that. You'll have a call for projects for safety that you can embed in. That's where we get the signalization work out here. A call for projects for congestion mitigation, sometimes these are mixed together. So, when the federal, when the Fed gets ready to release dollars, we get that up front, and they'll have a call for projects, and then we begin scurrying around to create projects. Well, if you haven't got it created, and you haven't got the documents necessary, you've lost. You might as well not even start, because you're never gonna measure up to meet the criteria to make it successful. So, then, once federal dollars are coming down, we get a warning that there's gonna be a call for projects, well, then we begin to generally assign dollar figures to a project that might work for us, that we can make work here, maybe, if we can get it through the technical committee and through the decision-makers. And then, this board would say, yeah, we'll do this, this, and this, and we've come before you with those. In other words, we would match, to get that, we would match it with this, that's a viable project for us. So, then, if it's not placed in the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, which we just finished, then you, you know, I remember when Kyle Brown and I were here, began studying this and figuring it out, Highway eighteen, just six, seven years ago, was not even in the Transportation Improvement Plan in Rankin County. Until you take the steps to get it embedded in that plan, there's no way it can rise to any federal dollar coming to it, it just doesn't work that way. So, we have to go through these planning stages to do that kind of stuff. Environmental, you gotta do a state environmental, and then you get a document back from the state to satisfy the feds that they've completed all the environmental assessments that go on, Stormwater being one of those. Design phase, then you spend a lot of time figuring it out, coming to the board, making sure that you wanna do this, going forward to that board, and it's just, it's problematic and time-consuming. Right-of-way acquisition, this is one I was in error on, I didn't think you could have a project that included right-of-way, but you can. It doesn't mean you can spend, you can't spend federal dollars, you can't spend project money to get that right-of-way, but right-of-way acquisition can be part of an MPO project, but you can't spend federal dollars on it. And utilities being relocated as well. Construction, you get a letter from them saying, okay, you've satisfied all these things going across this page that you see, and I'm gonna give you every one of them, every project that's in the MPO right now, you get an authorization or a letter to activate the project, you get a construction letter, a notice to proceed, you turn around, you know, after you put it out for bid, and you're sitting there with an active bid, it meets the dollars, and you get that letter, and then you're off to the races on go. Then, you can begin construction. And then, number nineteen, Matthew, is closeout. And we've recently learned that, if you don't close out these, then you're not eligible to open another one. It's kinda one of those, either taking care of business, or the business is taking care of you. So, closeout is just as important as opening one, right, Matthew? So, that's them in a nutshell. So, it, you know, when you look at these things, it looks like it takes a long time to get a signal improvement, intersection done. It took infinitely longer to get that project to fruition, to where it comes from a concept to a reality. There you go. Wednesday, there is a ribbon cutting out here at the National Guard Building, that's past the GM plant, been in that building several times, watching it come up, it's a magnificent maintenance building, they'll be working on, I think they'll have twenty-eight to thirty employees that work out there, they can basically work on anything on the road that the military would have, not tanks and things like that, but anything that's road-worthy they can work on. So, this is a big deal. I don't remember the millions that were spent on it, for some reason, I've got a number of twenty-one million in my head, might've been more than that, and it wouldn't be there without the water line that we put through there, that Rankin First helped get some money for that, and we achieved that, put that water line in. But that's the building. You go in, pass the GM plant, go in, you can't miss it, go in and turn right, and it will be a big bend out there. I guess number nine means there are eight more of these scattered across the United States, but it's, in essence, a school, it's a training center to teach people how to work on military vehicles. And I need, invite you to be there. Salus Drive, Harry and Mark and Lou would be the only ones that might remember Salus Drive. Salus Drive is a dead-end street that parallels New Highway four-seventy-one. Had an idea ten years ago to get more traffic out of downtown Brandon by using North Street at the statue, go past Rankin County, pass the new courthouse, go under the interstate, and get out of there as an escape out of downtown. You have a fender bender on Highway eighty, on College Street, and all of a sudden, everything goes stop, nobody can get out. So, this improves traffic going north, it wants to go to Luckney Road, or go north to Grants Fair Road, or up twenty-five, going somewhere else, this is another way to avoid half of downtown. So, the little circle you see there is one rental house, as I understand it, is it August twenty-sixth that goes before the supervisor, not supervisors, Rankin County, no, Rankin County School District, those board members. So, a sixteen-section property, and hopefully, it's gonna go away. All the blue that you see on that map, we already have. They helped us with this concept years ago, and we got down to one house that was left, and it's inhabitable, it's got to go away, it's too close to the edges, right? But the goal is to build a street going through there. So, if you wonder where this mountain of ground concrete that we have out here, this aggregate, that's where a lot of that's gonna go to help build this roadbed. I just see that as a big plus for downtown Brandon, improving traffic flow in and out of downtown, actually. So, we're close to that, after all these days. You remember the gates that you see at Corey Park, around the baseball fields, we have those slide gates to minimize the amount of traffic that's coming in there? It is a pain to open and close those, but to keep teenagers out of there, I would propose to you, you see the white space on here is where we hauled in concrete from Joe McGee when they built the interstate bridges. Those of you that forget, there were interstate bridges that were blown up, and they took it all out there and ground it all up, and they gave that back to us. So, we've got a good parking lot with four to six inches of aggregate underneath it, is what that white area is. Feel like we need to block out, we've had a tremendous amount of trouble with motorcycles and cars coming in there doing wheelies and cutting around, and every time they cut it, it makes a place for water to get into it. I can't count the number of times Ole's gone out there with a road grader trying to smooth that out. So, I'm gonna begin coming at you with, we need to put some gates up. So, how many gates? I don't know yet. I can tell you, just talk about those two at the top of the page, if you limited access into that big parking lot where you can get in and out in one place, you would reduce the amount of nefarious stuff going on there, because you'd reduce the escape route for anybody that's out there misbehaving, like y'all do. Y'all get out there and cut up stuff and misbehave all the time. About half of that parking lot will be, will have a base course on it, it may happen this week, which would be great, and then it's a question of, how many more gates you gonna put up there, just try to control traffic? I really don't wanna close the whole thing down, you oughta have some way to get in and out, and then be able to open it up when you got big tournaments or ball-ball going on or something like that, but need some gates out there to control traffic. Finally, the budget, kinda the last thing, I think, I got in here, I'm gonna spend a few minutes talking about this. So, tonight, you'll vote on the FY twenty-five budget proposal. You've all worked through it, we've had a lot of conversations about it, it's gone up and down and all around to arrive at a point where we're ready to put it before you and you to vote on it. There's gonna be people asking how this happened tonight, because we went into this many months ago saying we're gonna have a priority on personnel. Priority on personnel. In other words, our people, we need to take care of our people, we got good people, we want more good people, and we're gonna start walking the walk and talking the talk to keep them here. So, these are the steps we did to free up money in the general fund and in enterprise fund to some degree, to allow us to do the increases that we're talking about. So, we reduced our workforce, five positions there, that created probably close to three-hundred-thousand dollars in the budget in general fund. We had savings from debt reduction, we've been paying off debt aggressively to the point where now we need to stop, because if we paid off anymore, we'd be paying off something, we've borrowed money from one to two percent, it makes no sense at this point in time to be paying off debt that's at two percent interest or one percent interest. That's just really silly. So, done a great job there and gonna continue to pay debt. We use pro rata expenses in a lot of ways, give you an easy example of that, that can fall off your tongue. Instead of the general fund paying for generators at well sites and making sure that all that's working as it's supposed to, we shifted that expense over as we could to the enterprise fund, it's taking care of water systems, it's not taking care of the generator at the police department, or the one here at City Hall, or the one at the fire station. So, we need to break things up of where that expense come from. That's just really a bookkeeping exercise of, well, this over here is used for that, and that needs to be paying for it, not this over here. It's no more complicated than that. We did quite a bit of that. We use pro rata shares on expenses. We shifted general fund debt to two percent, that was the cost of this building. Mark had the idea that I needed to call our bond counsel in and have that conversation, and we described, we've got three more payments to make on this building, and this building is paid for. I've said since day one, if you remember Lou and Harry and Mark, Angela Bean and I came in here, and we made a pitch to get away from this building, to sell this thing. It was back in the day when we had zero money in the bank, and we were just looking to cut expenses any way, shape, form, or fashion we could. And that's when we began having shows in here, and we began to make improvements in here so that this building could stand on its own two feet, and at least help pay for the utilities and this kind of stuff. That's another good example of pro rata share. We've never broken out what the enterprise fund and the water department, what, they've never paid part of that electrical expense, it's always been a general fund, see, and water, water admin should be paying part of that, because they're in this building. It's another good example. So, we shifted this to two percent. We had a great show in there last night, had two good shows at the amphitheater, so we had three shows in three days, so I don't wanna hear people say that we can't do it. We did it last night, got them out of here, everybody was gone by the time the rain got here. So, it was just a great, small show, people had a good time, clean, safe, and we wanna do more of that. But shifting that over to the two percent off of the general fund, the three remaining, and by the way, one annual payment, principal and interest on this building equates to two months of the two percent that we receive off that sales tax. So, again, back to that sales tax, I'm gonna ask you to think about and remember that when the legislature begins to wanna start changing sales tax and how that might impact us over time, that's another thing to be thinking about. And the last thing was freezing unfilled positions. If they were open for the whole year in FY twenty-four, then many of those we just froze, and said, they still exist, but we didn't need them through the, through the last year, then we can get by with them for a little bit longer going into next year. So, those are key things to remember of how we're able to achieve the payments and increases to police, fire, public works, and everybody else going forward. So, that's critical. So, it's using good thinking, I think, and good management skills to get us there. We've got a developing situation in Greenfield Station that we'll talk about more in depth a little bit later. Gentlemen's driveway settled a little bit, settled about three or four inches, and began to have a conversation about it, and we knew we had a sewer line there closed, began to figure out where that was, and this is a picture going into it, we had it camered, and that's nothing but mud. So, the only way that much mud could get in, and now, this is, this has got, I'll have to count the houses, I don't know if it's sixteen, eighteen houses that this sewer line services upstream that are having problems. So, we've got a bypass pump going on, and we'll talk about, more about this in just a little while. That's kinda where it's at, and that's not Pecan Ridge, this is a, I had some other things in here, and I got sidetracks, I'm gonna shift, I'll tell you, this one is, this is another bore through a Stormwater pipe that actually is Center Point Energy, it's a gas line on the left there. And I believe that's gonna close it out. All the rest of that I didn't kill, didn't have time to eliminate it, you've already seen all of that, even though I think that's a great picture, I'm proud of that picture. And we'll go on. So, that's everything, that was just leftover from last time, folks. Y'all got any questions about anything we've talked about? Anything else come up to mind? Back to Asbils and Harry and thinking of something that a guest consultants might've done, looking at a neighborhood and four to six streets, the evaluation at that time might not have been the other fifty acres above it that might also be coming through there, or what's downstream of it, that kind of, so, again, that science has changed a lot, and I'm looking forward to the data that this young man's gonna bring us. By the way, I have a lot of confidence in him, I have to brag on him, on Hayden. So, sidebar, what time is it? Okay, I got two minutes, two-minute story here. We kept getting pushed back from MDOT about the East Brandon Bypass, which is out here at Exit Fifty-Nine, and they kept coming at me with, never gonna let you do it, because it's gonna require a no-rise permit. To get a no-rise permit, I don't know what you do to get one, I don't even know if they would give you one. But just real quick, first time I ever sat down with him, he said, well, the way to get around that is just, you have to build a new bridge over Richland Creek and Highway eighteen. In other words, you build a longer bridge that opens the throat of the floodwaters that can get through there, then you don't need a floodrise, you know? It's just, you know, a simple idea that I went, yeah, I believe, why didn't I think of that? Then I could've been working for Wagner Engineering. But, you know, it's, sometimes we get locked in on, this is the only way to go, and that's a very bad habit. Y'all should always be open to other thoughts and avenues of thinking, because sometimes you have that paradigm shift, and you go, gee, Lee, chief, why didn't you think of that? You know? Okay, well, we've got ten minutes before we start the board meeting. Chief, good stop this morning, long better, hope there's not a lot of smoke damage in the house. There we go. All right, proud of you. All right, so, we'll get started with our board meeting at six sharp. Y'all will get up and stretch your legs, I appreciate you listening to me, and we will continue forward. You too. Anybody got any spare batteries? Anybody got any spare batteries?
If y'all will bow your heads, please. My gracious heavenly father, what a wonderful day you've given us again today. We are so thankful for the blessings you've given us, thankful for the blessings that you bestowed upon this city, dear lord, the greatest city in the state of Mississippi. Please be with us as we make decisions tonight, dear lord, and in the future to lead this great city, to do even better things and to do each one of those in your name, dear lord. Watch over our first responders, keep them safe, dear lord. Help them to do your will as well as help us to do your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'm Keith Forbes. I'm a senior at Brandon High School. I am Keith Forbes. I'm a senior at Brandon High School. Everybody, please place your hand over your heart. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anyone here this evening that would like to make a public comment before the board? Seeing none, we will move on through the agenda.
I'd like to make one.
Hey, Mr. Walton.
I just want to say to the mayor and the board of Altamont, thank you so much for removing those trees on Luckner Road because they really needed it and we really, really appreciated it. Even though, you know, most of you know how I keep my yard, they messed my yard up, but I think we'll get that fixed. But we really appreciate mayor, what you and the board and the rest of you do out on Luckner Road, you too, chief. I see you have a man out there pretty often flagging them down. I think that's great. Keep it up. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Mr. Walton. Took down 33 trees on Luckner Road. Some of them are in really bad shape and I think tonight we've got, we'll get somewhere else in the city and do some more. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Walton. Appreciate that. Ms. Annie, you on the next list. She got one real close to her house down there. We're gonna get it. All right, we'll move on through the agenda and board. I have not heard from Chris Vincent, so I hope he's okay or he would be here for sure. So Harry, you heard anything, anyone? All right. Huh? All right, okay. Well, it is, there you go. It is a start of school and that's how he makes a living, so. All right. Number one, old business, approve the work session and regular board meeting minutes of August the 5th, 2024. And number two, approve the budget public hearing minutes, which were last Monday night, the work session minutes and the special call board meeting minutes of August 12th, 2024. Their motion to make, to approve those two items?
So moved.
Most of them is Sharon Womack, Mr. Harry Williams. Any question on those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, under the mayor. Number one, consideration to approve an engineering services agreement with Neil Schaefer regarding the Richland Creek Stone Bridge EWP ditch project in amount of $61,200. Half of the engineering agreement's estimated cost will be covered by a grant from NRCS. Finance director has permission to make all necessary budget amendments. Two, consideration to approve a contract with North American Midway Entertaining Astro Amusement LLC to furnish amusement rides and concessions during the 2025 Brandon Days to be held on May 1 through 4, 2025, dates inclusive, that is Brandon Jubilee. Miss Mary, would Mary Ann, if you would, Brandon Jubilee in there instead of Brandon Day. Number three, consideration to approve the lowest and best quote to bucket rents for two whacker packers, LLT, six light towers and use at the amphitheater in amount of $24,228. Board, that puts us owning six if we get those and we diminish the number that we rent. Number four, consideration to accept the best professional services proposal for right away tree removal, project number three, the specialty tree service is selected by the tree evaluation committee consisting of Sharon Womack, Jared Crane, and David Ferris at various areas across the city. Number five, consideration to...
Mayor, I don't have the amount and if project three is specified, if the amount was 107...
108 even?
They're also the lowest as well.
Thank you. Number five, consideration to approve an advertisement for Brandon High School in amount of $230 in the Rankin News. Number six, consideration to grant permission to the mayor to travel to Vicksburg, Mississippi to attend the 2024 Small Town Conference, October 9th and 10th, and authorize payment of all related travel expenses, which it won't be any, I'll travel back and forth. Number seven, consideration to discuss further, task order number two, an agreement with Wagner Engineering concerning the stormwater assessment in the amount of $658,000. We covered that in the work session. I believe we're good to go unless the board has other questions. So there are seven items there, board. Mr. Baker, you have a question?
No, I mean, we have a discussion, but did we have action actually?
We've already taken action unless the board wants to change that or move forward with it as stated in the work session.
So we're gonna proceed with that?
We're gonna, yes.
Okay, we don't need action on that one.
Well, yeah, just leave it. It's all right. We got motion by Mr. Lou Coker. Second, Mr. David Ferris. Any question or comment on any of that? Go ahead.
So on number two, I know these are, these are dates that you're thinking we'll have it next year, but have we done any research to see or make sure that anybody else around us isn't having a pearl day or flow wood date at the same weekend?
All right, so if we, if someone, if Pile Hatchie, Bucket, Pearl, Richland was having something, you want to change the date or you want to do your own thing?
Well, you gotta do our own thing, but last year it was just, I think we should just, it's no way that we should, couldn't pick up the phone and just call next door or something to see when that they were having theirs.
All right, I would say, I would say that's a good question. I also say that last two years, we've done it on the same day and then they moved theirs on top of ours. So it's really, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get word out there right now is why I push this ahead of time, this far in advance rather than waiting till December or January to announce that, so we can start promoting it more.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to follow up with those kind of conversations.
And I had a question on number seven.
Before, before we get off, hang on just a second, before we get off of that, those are the only dates that we could get from that company. They, it's kind of their first stop on their tour through the year, so there wasn't another week to get. So the midway kind of pushes Jubilee Day in that sense. Number seven?
Yes. Ryan?
So we've already voted on that earlier and it's just an opportunity to say, now wait a minute, let's make sure that board, you are getting what you need and want from them. And we spent a work session kind of talking about that.
Okay.
So is there, but they need to know or he need So is there, but they need to know or he needs to know there's something specific.
I was just going to ask, how often will this be updated? I know things happen, but the nature happens.
We talked about that in the work session. It'll be a kind of a living document. I'd say ever, depending on how fast you grow, it could be over three to five years. I wouldn't say any longer than that. I'd say five or six years at a minimum it should be revisited.
Okay.
As other subdivisions, other commercial properties come online. So it'll be kind of a living document, like the water and wastewater plans that we have. All right. Great question, though. I asked the same question out there. At least Hayden answered me, Ryan didn't answer, Hayden did, so I don't know who's in charge. So, great questions. Is there any other question, comment? All right. We got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, Ms. Mary Ann. Check and see if that microphone's on.
Can you hear me now?
There we go.
Good evening, everyone. My take one through seven together.
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration to adopt the fiscal year 2024, 2025 taxing and spending plan and authorized publication of the same. Consideration to approve professional services agreement for the purposes of promoting tourism in accordance with House Bill 1521 and other lawful related purposes, authorize the mayor to execute the same and approve payment of all show-related expenditures. This time we have John Party sell-off agreement, Brandon Amphitheater, 101024. Consideration to accept a donation of a small piece of property located adjacent to the City Hall parking lot in order to create additional parking spaces and also to approve recording the attached warranty deed with the Chancery Clerk's Office. Consideration to approve payment to Wagner Engineering in the amount of $9,990 for the engineering specifications related to the Tennis Court Rehabilitation Project. Consideration to grant permission for the advertisement bid related to the Tennis Court Rehabilitation Project. Consideration to approve the Mississippi Municipal League annual membership fees for fiscal year 2025 at the rate of $10,455.20 and authorized payment of the same. Consideration to approve docket of claims for August 19, 2024, Fox Everett Claims released on August 8, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. There a motion to approve of seven items from the clerk? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack. Second, Mr. Jared Crane. Any question on those? Based on population.
And it was the same as last year's. I, I checked it and it was last year's.
Our, if you saw the rates we pay for liability insurance and workers' comp, they're also, those are based on population and the number of employees we have. It's like trash pickup is based on number of rooftops we have. So it's all a numbers game. Okay. Great question. Got a motion, second. Any further question, comment? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. All right, Ms. Carly, I see you're back up to 12.
I am.
All right. So let's do, let's do the first six.
Six.
Okay, let's break it there.
All right. Item number one, consideration to approve pay request one final in the amount of $7,050, $150 from Sullivan Construction Services for the Serenity Court Drainage Improvements Project and authorized payment of the same. Item number two, consideration to approve pay request one final in the amount of $13,000 from Sullivan Construction Services for the Lewis Wilson Drive Box Culvert Retaining Wall Repairs Project and authorized payment of the same. Number three, consideration to approve pay request two final, including the final summary change order in the amount of $2,718.25 from Hemp Hill Construction Company for the 2023 Grand Door Drainage Improvements Project and authorized payment of the same. Number four, consideration to approve pay request one in the amount of $34,490 from Duraco Construction Incorporated for the Pecan Circle Drainage Improvements Project and authorized payment of the same. Number five, consideration to approve pay request five in the amount of $496,125.69 from AdCamp Incorporated for the 2024 Street Overlay Project and authorized payment of the same. And number six, consideration to approve invoice 53802 in the amount of $120,432 from Sunbelt Crushing LLC for concrete crushing services and authorized payment of the same.
All right. Got a question here. Which one, Mr. Baker?
The change order is a reduction, all right?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to, you mind if I put that in there?
Yes, and it's in the memo as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Items one through six, there a motion to approve those six items? Motion by Mr. Jared Crane. Second by Mr. Harry Williams. Any comment, question on those? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Yes, ma'am.
Item number seven, consideration to approve the quote in the amount of $12,258.20 from Southern State's Utility Trailer Sales as the best and lowest quote received for the replacement of the bed liner in the 2016 Freightliner Dump Truck, VIN 5746. Number eight, consideration to declare an emergency, the repairs to the Provence Park Lift Station located on Provence Park pursuant to the memo. Number nine, consideration to allow Tim Martin, Public Works Inspector, to travel to Gulfport, Mississippi on October 22nd through 24th for the introduction to ARC GIS Online Course offered through the Mississippi State Extension Offices. Number 10, consideration to approve the quote and purchase of two Myers VS 55 horsepower submersible lift station pumps in the amount of $10,398.33 per pump from Harvey Services as the best and lowest quote received. These pumps will be spares that will be kept at the city shop for future lift station repairs as these pumps are compatible at multiple locations. Number 11, permission to proceed with the storm drain point repairs and town station subdivision as listed on the attachment and authorize Hemp Hill Construction Company to perform said repairs at the FY 24 General Construction Service Commodity Pricing. And number 12, consideration to declare an emergency, the sewer line repairs near 437 and 439 Greenfield Ridge Circle.
Thank you, Ms. Carly. There a motion to approve those six items remaining? Motion by Ms. Sharon Womack. Who said, who said that? Second by Mr. David Ferris. Board, I want you to know on number 11, that is not all the repairs that will be done in there. Same way that we have approached cross gates in that one-fifth area up there, we've identified the worst, I believe it was five, that we are moving forward on. So we found five point repairs in there. There'll be more work to do, so I just didn't want you to think you were seeing something and that was finality. There will be more to come. All right. Motion, second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carly. Yes, ma'am.
Stop. Matthew Miller. Can we get an update on Rain Tree Afton and Old Town and where we are with that?
Microphone.
They working now?
Yes.
Yes, so we've got the engineering part figured out. Last time I talked to the mayor, we were going to put together some different alternatives, like start phase one, phase two, phase three. And to be honest, I had, I think they did it last week and I haven't looked at it. I hadn't even been in my office today.
Okay.
But we've got that pretty well ready. I just need to get it in front of him and y'all and go through it.
Okay.
So, you know, it's as we talked about, all that pipe from the upstream end down there to the backside of Rain Trees, undersized.
Is that going to include, are we going to have to go back behind there that where we looked at, behind Afton, where we've got some issues with that water coming down?
Correct. That pipe's understa, all the way up to that property to the east, all that's under, every bit of it's undersized.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just one for me. Consideration of a comprehensive sign plan submitted by Texaco Mon Edum Enterprises for the ground sign located at 2145 Highway 18, parcel number H8-10-70.
All right. There a motion to approve?
Second. What's that? Uh, no, sir.
Blue.
Um, I believe it's just a redo of a sign, well, this one, the station that's down there, if I'm not mistaken. We get a bunch of these, but.
Sam.
Go ahead.
All they're doing is they're changing the logo, Texaco Corporate.
Mm-hmm.
And they're taking a 40-foot sign that's up there.
We're coming down.
Bringing it down to 20.
Right.
But what's up there now is still 138 or 128 square feet or something like that.
Right.
Been approved before.
So they're just coming into compliance. Right.
All right. Motion by Mr. Lou Coker, second by Mr. Jared Crane. Any further comment or question? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, sir. Chief?
Only have one item tonight. So request permission to accept the fiscal year 24 Homeland Security Grant, number 24LE128 in the amount of $30,000 and authorize Mayor Butchley, Chief Joseph French, City Clerk Mary Ann Hess, Finance Director Tracy Riggan, Detective William Saul, and Lydia Easley to execute all necessary documents.
Welcome to my grant world. There a motion to approve it? Motion by Mr. Harry Williams, second by Mr. Lou Coker. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, chief. Thank you, board.
Thank you. One other deal. Past week or so, I've had several people call concerning that we weren't doing any enforcement with the squatted trucks. But I do want to update you and let you know, we are enforcing it, but the state law, the way the statute was written is we can't write any tickets until January 27th. It gave the people that have the squatted trucks a grace period to get their vehicles fixed to come into compliance with the law. So you still see some squatted trucks riding around, but come Janu, uh, January 27th, we are going to start issuing citations for that.
I think now you need to tell them what a squatted truck is.
It's the trucks that look like this going down the road.
Hey, so are we pulling anybody over and warning them or?
Yes, we are giving them warnings right now. We just can't do any type of technical, write a citation or anything, any enforcement action we can't take right now.
Is that the Carolina Squad?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Wait, what?
Yeah, that's what they call it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Other dri, Harry, other drivers don't know how they drive them either. Scaring them. All right. Go ahead, chief.
Oh, it's definitely not safe. Um, got four items, we'll take them all together.
Yes, sir.
Item number one is request permission to purchase two sets of fire gear from Delta Fire Safety at the state contract price, amount of $6,830 and authorize the payment of the same. Item number two, consideration to approve three-year contract with Time Clock Plus for our fire department scheduler software and authorize myself to execute the documents. Item number three is request permission to accept the Homeland Security Grant 2024 in the amount of $20,204 and authorize the mayor, myself, Mary Ann, Tracy, Carolyn, and all to execute the same. And I'd like to add more, Baker, to that. I want to add more, Baker, to sign us some documents, too. It's in my memo.
I don't have any. I go from a memo about Homeland Security Grant to fire and two three and four times.
Hmm. I'll make sure you have it, sir.
Okay, well, I kind of like to look at it. You need one?
He needs to copy it. No, it's digital, not going to help. Yeah, we'll prove it's subject to review by council.
Yes, sir.
That's okay with you, board?
That's the same exact one as PD has.
All right. And number four.
Request permission to purchase tires for fire engine number two, number three, and number five from Southern Tire Mart at the lowest and best quote.
Thank you, chief. There a motion to approve those four items?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jared Crane. Second by Mr. Harry Williams. Any question? It was Jared and Harry. All right. All in favor? Okay, let's get this one out of, yeah, stay right there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. So we'd like an update on the construction of trucks.
Um, we've been through, everything's final. We're just in, we're on deck. We're in limbo. We're, uh, been to, put us on the assembly line. Should be pretty soon, looking around spring of '25, hopefully.
Yeah, I, you were thinking April, May, if I remember right?
Uh, yes.
When we talked last?
Hopefully, hopeful.
Okay. Unless there's some shortage or something and waiting.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you, chief. Board, like to retire to determine the assess of being in executive session. Motion by Mr. Lou Coker. Second by Sharon Womack. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. All right, audience, we will ask you to leave the room, please. We will be as expedient as we can. And we will be as expedient as we can.
Our next board meeting will be Tuesday, September the 3rd.
Okay, let me announce on the record there were three votes taken with regard to personnel matters in executive session.